So. Uh, call the meeting to order. And uh, I haven't got a flag. So has anybody got a flag?
Right behind me.
Excellent. So um, let's have the pledge of allegiance. So I think we can all stand up. Right? So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great. So um, our first order of business is to approve the minutes from March 11th. So has everybody had a chance to um, look those over? And are there any comments or amendments you'd like to make?
Looked at it. It looks good to me.
Yeah, it looks fine.
Okay. So could I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 11th, 2020, please?
So moved.
Second. Anybody seconding? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. So um, now we have a time for public comment. So seeing as how we're all on Zoom, um, if anybody would like to make a public comment, could you identify yourself, please? And then um, we're going to observe our normal rules for public comment. And so please go ahead. Anybody has a public comment? Okay, hopefully nobody's been shut out by the technology, but I didn't hear anybody come forward. So uh, Dr. Antonucci, would you like to deliver your report?
Yeah, thank you. I just really want to say one thing, you know, kind of hot off the press news that I shared with you all this afternoon and I shared with the greater community in an email and a MailChimp message as well as on social media. But we've just concluded a very unorthodox search in terms of the format of the search for the Alden School principal. As you all know, Karen Whitaker, who's actually on this call, I can see her, is retiring at the end of the year and she certainly leaves big shoes to fill. But we were in the middle of our search when we were forced into school closure. So we had to run it entirely virtual. And amazingly, it actually ended up being a very strong process, a very thorough process and very inclusive. I'm really pleased with that. I'm pleased with it on many levels. Number one is that we had, we ended up having a very strong candidate pool. We interviewed semifinalist candidates last week, virtually on Thursday and Friday. We invited two finalists back to the district this week on Monday and Tuesday. And this morning, I announced that Alden Assistant Principal Chase Asho Zia is the new principal of the Alden School effective July 1, 2020. And to say that the Alden community has responded with great enthusiasm in backing of Chase's candidacy would probably be a great understatement. He has proven himself to be a very effective leader. And this was not an easy process for him to go through. And he earned, he earned the appointment and I just can't say enough about him. And I'm truly looking forward to having him join our leadership team in this new capacity and new role. And I just want to say I'm really excited about it. And I want to thank everybody who participated in the, in the search. Shannon represented this committee on, on the search committee. Kelly participated the last couple of days in our, in our candidate forums. And it was great to have her on those. And she can attest to the support that Chase had at the end of the process. And I'm really excited. And again, the process was unorthodox in the sense that we had to run it virtually. But I think it was a home run and I'm really pleased with it. So I just wanted to share that with you all tonight publicly.
That's great.
Yeah, and I just, sitting in on yesterday's interview, I mean, the response from the Alden staff to Chase and just the substance of the comments, ways in which he helps and is supportive, his love for the students came through. You know, and my daughter was there three years. So you have a different relationship as a parent with an administrator. And seeing how his staff just reveres him and the interaction he has with the Alden family, as they call it, I was blown away. So I couldn't, I couldn't be more happy. Like as a school committee member, I was thinking, our kids are in the best hands. Like we really are lucky.
Thanks, Kelly. I said in the, I can't remember what message today I said it in. But you know, you hope, you hope at the end of these processes, processes that you have, you have clarity on who's the right choice and you know, who's the best fit for, for a school community. And, and you know, by, by last night, it was just clear as a bell to me that, that we're making the right choice. And I know he's, I can't speak for him, but I know he's very excited to have that appointment and he's, he's ready to get going. I'd also would say, and I know I said this in my messages to the community today, but I'll say it while she's here, but he has very big shoes to fill. You know, Karen Whitaker has done an incredible job as principal of the Alden School. She's led that school to excellence in so many ways. And it's an incredible culture and our students are so well-served by her leadership. So he has big shoes to fill and he'll, he'll fill them well. But we're also going to miss Karen and I guess I'm having to be past my denial that she's leaving. But she is. And, but we thank her for everything she's done. And it's, and again, we'll have time to celebrate before the year ends. But I just did want to recognize her in the moment.
That's fantastic. Well done.
Yeah, thank you very much. That's a wonderful result. Wonderful result.
That's all I have for you tonight.
Okay, um, Dr. Klingerman.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to pass on my comments because I'll be presenting in just a few minutes on our updated remote learning plan.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mrs. Blake, do you have anything for?
I do. So good evening, everyone. So during the school closure, I just wanted to let you all know that I've been working very closely with our food service provider, which is Chartwell's, to ensure that we're continuing to serve food to those students who participate in our free and reduced lunch program. So initially, when we first were notified that school was going to be closed, we were told that Duxbury would not be eligible to receive any federal funding through the National School Lunch Program, given that our meal distribution site isn't located in an area that has 50% or more free and reduced lunch population. However, just recently, the 50% participation rate requirement was waived. So we will be able to receive some funding for the lunches that we've been distributing. And during the first week of the program, the first week that school was closed, we had about a 12% participation rate. So that was 12% of our students were coming to the middle school to pick up lunch for, lunch and breakfast for several days. And then as the weeks have passed, this week, the participation rate has increased to 30%. And I anticipate that those numbers will continue to increase week over week. We have and we certainly will continue to urge any and all families that may need assistance with food to reach out to us. And we are certainly trying to do our best to help. And I just wanted to offer a really sincere thank you to all those that have helped me make this program possible during the school closure.
Great. Thank you very much. I know we've had some community members helping out there. So thank you for recognizing them because that's been really important.
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay, we don't have any student representatives, do we?
I don't believe so.
No, I don't think so. Okay. And I don't have any particular contribution to make. Do any of the other school committee members want to give a report or update on what they're thinking?
Well, I have a couple. Are we going to talk about the out-of-school learning at all? Yes? Okay. Um, so I'll wait on that. And then the other thing is, I don't know if any of you saw, Alden put out a video for the students that said, "I miss you." And it was literally like the whole staff. And it's, I don't know, maybe five or seven minutes long. And, and, and I was like bawling at the end. And all the comments on social media were like, "I was really good for the first two minutes." It is so heartwarming and amazing and a way to reach the kids with the teachers with pets and waving and they all made a sign, "I miss you" and different things. It was absolutely wonderful. So Karen, I don't know if you came up with that or whoever came up with it. It was fantastic.
Yeah, and you know, Kelly, I'd like to just add to that. I don't know, can people hear me? Am I unmuted?
Yeah.
Yeah, I really just, you know, John and Danielle and Katie and all of your colleagues and all of the faculty, I'd like to just thank you. I mean, it's really, everyone's personal lives are in turmoil, but also your work lives have such a huge impact on our community. So I just want to thank you personally for all that you're doing. And certainly extend my thanks to all the faculty who I know are doing everything they can to provide the best opportunities for our students. So I'm really very grateful and I think many people in the community are extremely grateful as well. So thank you.
Yes, thank you, Peter. That's, I think that's a generally accepted principle in the community at the moment.
Peter, on behalf of everybody, you know, I just want to say thank you. I think the words you used there that are most important are that we're doing our best. And that, that's all we can promise at this point. We've been asked to effectively transform public education overnight. And it's, it's just not easy. And our faculty and staff have so risen to the occasion over the last two and a half weeks at this point. It's been remarkable to watch and I'm really proud of all of them. So we'll continue to do our best. We're adapting to this kind of new, new way of life. And we continue to take guidance from anybody we can to make things better. And, but thank you. I appreciate that.
You know, John, isn't it remarkable? You said two and a half weeks and it's seen so much longer than that. You know what I mean? It's like, on the one hand, it's, this is all so sudden, but all of us are finding a way to kick into these new routines. And it's, it's really traumatic in terms of what's happening. So yeah, it's incredible. You said two and a half weeks. I'm like, oh my God, it's only been, it's only been to really two and a half weeks. It's incredible. So.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. So our first discussion item is the update on Duxbury's remote learning plan. So Dr. Klingerman, I think that's you starting that one off.
Yep. So I'm going to go over just kind of the change that we've gone through over the past two and a half weeks. And I think it feels like two and a half weeks because each day lasts about two and a half weeks right now during this closure. So that's why time has stood still. But over the past three weeks, it's been a time of ever-changing directives and guidance from the state about expectations for public schools across the Commonwealth. So when we initially thought we were experiencing a two-week closure, we started with several immediate areas that needed our attention, which Katie already mentioned, a continuation of the meals program. And we also wanted to ensure that our students had devices and access to Wi-Fi in order to remain connected to their classes and teachers during the closure. So we, I think we've done five different technology handouts at this point because initially families maybe didn't reach out that they wanted additional devices at home. But as the closure lengthened, they did reach out to us. So we'll probably talk a little bit more, but we'll probably have one more opportunity for device pickup. We also assisted some families that didn't have Wi-Fi connectivity to make sure that we could remain in contact with those families and students. So initially, our aim was connectedness, always with the mind, body, and self focus. And our staff reached out to students as soon as possible with learning activities, but it was in a slightly less structured format. Immediately, we were blown away by the outreach that our staff provided to students. And then just what their, the staff creativity was just really remarkable to witness right from the start. When we learned that the closure was set to be more long-term, which was early last week, we immediately shifted to a plan with our administrative team and the Duxbury Teachers Association that would allow for continuity of learning and student assignment accountability, keeping in mind that not all students have equity of access to the learning being provided for a number of reasons. Those reasons may be IEP needs, English learner needs. We have students who have jobs during the day that are helping their families. Students that are helping with childcare that have working parents in town. There are parents that simply are busy with their own jobs during the day and have limited availability to support the learning that we're making available to our students. But despite those challenges, our focus was to provide schoolwork to students so that learning could continue. And we want to assist our families with providing some sense of normalcy and structure to the students' days because, as I mentioned, each day is feeling like it's lasting for more than 24 hours. And so as much as we can have the students engaged in productive activities, that would be our focus. So starting this week, our elementary teachers, all the way up to our high school teachers, have communicated a more structured learning plan, students and families. We're not intending to replicate what happens at school at home. That's simply impossible, but we're working to continue learning and provide that much-needed structure and minimize our students' regression. So at Chandler, the teachers are using a combination of Google Classroom, perhaps for our older second grade students there, as well as CSO, to post assignments and for students to respond with their work. And our Alden School classes are mainly using Google Classroom and the teachers and specialists are providing content across disciplines that's intended to reinforce student learning. Starting this past Monday at DMS, Mrs. McGuire started sending out a weekly parent email with team-based newsletters that included activities, assignments, virtual learning sessions, and ways to stay connected throughout the week. And also at DHS, beginning this past Monday, we asked individual teachers to send out emails to the students and parents with specific information about assignments, projects, and upcoming virtual classroom sessions so the parents can partner with the schools. Because we wanted to be very clear, especially with our high school and middle school students, that number one, assignments are being provided. Number two, these assignments were not optional. And the reason for this is when students are saying that they have no work or remote classroom sessions, we wanted parents to know the truth so that if the students had an 8:30 virtual classroom session, we know that parents would work with us to make sure their kids are up and about and ready to attend those sessions. So that was the aim there, to involve the parents so that the parents knew that there were indeed assignments. And we reminded parents about how they could access their students' Schoology if they wanted more information about the assignments. So right now, what, where we are with that is we're working out a number of details with more communication to follow, including how assignments will be credited, especially at the high school level, how grading for the year will be determined, as well as accountability for students who are not completing assignments or attending remote learning sessions. So we're going to be looking to work to create a plan with how can we engage students who are not participating? How can we better provide assignments that have a focus on that universal design for learning? Because we have many students in our schools pre-K through 12 that really don't complete assignments independently. They're dependent on learning center support or support from the specialists. And right now, we know that that's not available at home. So we want to provide assignments that students can, as much as possible, complete independently. And we're also working on how we can support our special education students across the district. Because it's not possible for our, for our teachers and our staff to be doing remote, real-time learning sessions for our students because they're dealing with, many of our teachers have young children at home that they're responsible for watching and educating themselves. Families are just, their lives have been turned upside down. So that includes our staff as well as the families that, that we're responsible for educating. So I just wanted to finish off with, we are going to be very flexible with families as every family has different circumstances at home right now. We have, we have working parents, we have single-parent households, we have families that have young children that they're needing to pay attention to during the day and may not be able to sit with older students and replicate school. We have middle and high school students working during the day who may not be able to attend remote classes, but we're just asking our families to communicate. If you have unique needs in your family and that your child is maybe doing all the work assigned but can't attend a remote session because of responsibilities during the day, just reach out to the teacher or principals if you have unique needs and we can work with you on that. If we don't hear from you, we, we may be reaching out to you in the near future. But we're also trying to be realistic with the expectation of we can't have our staff members individually calling 75 families in a week to see what's going on. So we're, we're asking for some cooperation and support there. Just want to, again, reinforce what was already said. Our staff have been absolutely amazing and so has the Duxbury Teachers Association with their immediate flexibility and switch over to this remote learning situation that we're in. And I think that we all know that this is a work in progress and that there's certainly going to be bumps that we have to work through. But now that's, that's what our goal is, week by week, is to assess where we are, what can we do better? And what can we change in order to maintain the learning that, that we're focusing on? So I know you probably have questions or comments, but I just wanted to start with a general overview of what's been happening. So I'm glad to answer any questions.
Hey, this is Matt Danielle. Thanks for that. I just have a clarification question. So when you guys are saying you're looking into how to grade and how to, you know, check on accountability for non-participants and stuff, is that just for the high school and middle school or are those, is that sort of across all four schools?
I think it's mainly a high school concern at the moment. We have, I think the middle school and elementary school, elementary schools are standards-based. So I think that it's easier to determine where we are in terms of collecting assignments. We know that we can't expect mastery of concepts right now. So we're looking to provide reinforcement of skills. If we're introducing a new skill, we're doing that with the thought in mind that we know we'll have to review this once we're in person. The high school has the unique situation that they had grades up until March 13th. So we're trying to determine right now what, what we'll do with the grades that were up until March 13th. Will we switch to have the second half of the school year be more of a credit, no credit, pass, fail, for lack of a better term? But those are all conversations that we're having because we don't want to penalize students who maybe didn't have a lot of assignments at the beginning of this term and we're counting on the end of the term to really bring their grade up. So when we have these conversations about grading, we want to do it in a way that we're not penalizing students and we're supporting, we don't want students' grade point averages to be impacted by a situation beyond their control. So we're looking at all those different scenarios and just trying to come to some consensus together as I'm working closely with Lisa Dembowski and with, with the administrative team at the high school.
So is it, I thought I had read one of the earlier messages. I know there's been a lot of, of communication. Is it, is it true that like, and this might have something to do with like the state regulations? I, I thought I had read somewhere that we can't give them credit or we can't, like, everything has to be optional. Is that, is that the case or is that not the case for the high school?
At the beginning, when it was a two-week closure, it was a little bit different. Now, as John mentioned, a lot of the districts, especially the high-performing districts, are working to do a continuation of learning. Is, is it optional? No, it's not optional at this point in that we want to be able to provide students with course completion at the end of the school year. And so hopefully this closure ends up being shorter term than longer term. And so I think that's why we're looking to say, it's not optional, but if your family has unique circumstances, we will certainly work with families individually to create individual learning plans. We don't want it to be optional for our elementary students because that would be detrimental to their, with, keeping up with their skills. And we don't want to see a lot of regression.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
I just want to clarify, the special ed piece, I'm getting, you know, I mean, that's basically a state mandate, correct?
With the special education?
That we can't, well, can you sort of explain? Because I'm hearing, well, other districts are Skyping and taking care of special ed that way. And I mean, do we have unique circumstances? What's sort of the direction from the state?
Right now, the, the direction from the state has changed every single week in terms of what we've been told to do. We're working through a lot of, there's a lot of issues with providing students with individual support via remote learning because of confidentiality issues, whether or not it would even be appropriate to try to provide services to students over a Skype or that kind of thing. And so again, with our staff and with the, we're working on a memorandum of agreement with the DTA of what remote learning looks like from the teacher's standpoint. Right now, we're not at a place where we can provide individual service delivery. But with that, we're doing everything we possibly can to support our special needs students who have individual IEPs that we need to be following. And so that might be that we're making accommodations with assignments, that we're providing resources and advice and support of how we can better access, have students access the assignments that are being given. And so I think that is probably our work over the next week or two is to really clarify what that will look like, especially if it's an extended closure. And right now, we're still kind of waiting for more guidance on the state because we're all in the same boat with that in all districts.
I just want to make a point, just something to follow up on what Danielle just said. And I, I know we've said this, I just want to reiterate, but we are not working in a vacuum here. We, we are in constant daily contact with neighboring towns, districts throughout the Commonwealth, the Department of Education. The, the guidance is rapidly changing, but it's also coming, coming to us fast and furious. So I just want you to know, we won't work in a vacuum. We're not working in a vacuum. And you know, we, what we're doing in Duxbury is very much in alignment with the expectations, especially from the state's point, if not better. But I just wanted to kind of reiterate that. That's it.
I'm, sorry, can I just ask one more question? And I kind of have no right to ask this, so feel free to just say, it's way too early to even think about this. Because if I am sitting where you guys are sitting, I'm just trying to figure out what is happening over the next five minutes versus next year. But has there been any discussion, like with any of the districts or in our district or at the state level about what happens next year? So let's assume that, you know, this goes on for a month, another couple of months, maybe. You know, maybe, who knows, for the, for the end of the year. You know, you get kindergartners coming in, they have to come in. So you've got to, I would think, you've got to progress everybody to the next grade. Like how, has there been any discussion around how that will even be approached? Or is it just too early to even like think about that yet?
I think it's something that we're all thinking about and we're hopeful that the students don't end up having a six-month lapse in their education because that would be detrimental. I think elementary-wise, no matter when we come back, it's going to be an adjustment that we're going to need to make in terms of mastery of skills for this school year heading into September of next year. So I think that, personally, I think we have a long way to go in the months of April and May and June to see if what we can do to support students over the summer if the state reopens. I think that's a conversation we can have. But I think we will certainly have adjusted expectations for the students where a typical regression and review period might be six weeks at the beginning of a school year. We may be paying a much more adjusted first term next year if the students are indeed out of school for a long period of time. So I think those are important conversations and thoughts that we're all having. I don't think we have a plan yet because we're sort of in that limbo of, is March, is May 4th the date? Or are we going to be looking at an extension beyond May 4th? And it's tricky. So I, I think all of us are in the same limbo of not knowing when this is going to end. If it ends in the summer, if we were to leave the closure and it was June, we could certainly make a plan prior to school, beginning to enhance students' learning over the summer in a different way than we perhaps have in the past.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
In a, in a similar vein, what's happening with our high school juniors who are going to be concerned about their AP courses and other grades? Looking forward to applying to college next year?
Julie, I can, I can answer the AP question. The AP College Board's actually made a pretty good adjustment for AP nationally. And Danielle, correct me if I'm wrong, but they, they're, they've shifted actually to a computer-based testing model. And they're only going to be testing on material up through the beginning. And they're only going to be testing on material up through the beginning of March. So what our students, both in Duxbury and nationally be tested on, you know, will have covered. So they've done a good job responding to that. As far as the college stuff, again, I mean, we're in limbo. College is not even doing tours right now. I know our guidance staff is going to continue to work with our students to, you know, pare down lists and look at options, but we're, you know, the country's on hold right now. So I couldn't even pretend to answer that question with any kind of intelligent response.
Great. Thank you. It's complicated.
Yeah. And Julia, I might be able to comment. I have a junior this year. You know, John, my, the feedback that I got was, you know, Duxbury Sequence isn't necessarily aligned with the AP. So they go out of order a little bit. So my son Rory was suggesting that if they're testing through March, there's not uniformity across the country of what testing through March meant. So that's, it's not unique to Duxbury, but that was the initial reaction from a 17-year-old who's taken a couple AP classes is like, well, that's not going to be great because there are a couple of units that we're going to be tested on that we're going to, you know, we're going to be covered later in the year. So I don't know if that's something that's being worked upon.
Yeah. I mean, there's no, you're probably right. I mean, there's really nothing we can do about it. That happens almost, that happens every year with the AP. If you think about it, the East Coast is usually behind the rest of the country. Some of the Midwest schools go back mid-August. So every year you hear things like they get three weeks, they get a three-week jump on the AP curricula, that kind of thing. So yeah, I mean, again, who knows? But at this point, we have to, we have to go with what we have. There's really no, no other option.
This is Shannon. I think I read that, in addition to saying through March, they're, they're putting up a list of what they're testing and they're also offering some free webinars as well and things. I think the AP has taken extra steps as well that will maybe address some of those concerns, Peter.
Great.
And as far as the state's position on MCAS, can you remind me what, where we are with that? Are they still waiting for the federal government to release them from their obligation for MCAS?
Yep. I believe the state has requested a waiver from that federal mandate that all states must have that standardized testing. So I would predict that it's pretty unlikely that we'll have to administer MCAS tests this spring, no matter when we return, but we haven't received official word on that yet.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments on this topic or concerns that have arisen, questions? Okay. Let's then, the next item on the agenda is the school calendar discussion. So Dr. Antonucci, I think that's over to you.
Yeah. So obviously we're in crazy times, but our school calendar, we have two, we have two breaks coming up. We have the Good Friday holiday, which is a week from this Friday on the school calendar. And then we have April break, obviously. There's a lot of discussion around the state. And Danielle can attest to this. I think there were probably 200 emails today from, quite literally, from districts discussing the options related to it. What I'm going to recommend, and I'm certainly open to feedback, is that we observe our breaks, that we observe the Good Friday holiday that was already on the calendar, and that we observe for a couple of different reasons. Primarily, I think we need a break. Families and teachers and administrators are scrambling right now. It has become a 24/7 job and I'm actually not sure that we can keep pace without, without some break from that routine. That's one. Second is that we, if we decided to continue our remote learning plan, let's say through April break, right, that we didn't actually take an official break, those would come off our calendar. So instead of getting out on June 22nd, which is a Monday, I believe, we would actually have to back our last day of school up to whatever that would be. I don't have a calendar in front of me right now. Which in a, in a, in a normal year, that would sound great, right? But what I'm looking ahead to is I'm trying to be very optimistic that we will come back to school. And I think if we come back to school, I think it's really important for us to have as many days as possible with the students. And cutting five days off at the end of the year just does not seem like, like a smart move at this time. So for those really two reasons, it's not that complicated of a discussion. But for those two reasons, I'd strongly recommend that we just stick to our school calendar and that we actually take a break from our remote learning during, during those, during those periods. Again, I'm open to suggestions and opinion, but it's, I feel pretty strongly about my recommendation. But I'd love to hear alternative opinions.
Well, I'll just comment. I mean, those are just two very sound persuasive and compelling arguments. Makes perfect sense to me, you know, really makes sense. So I think that's, yeah, no, no question for me whatsoever. It makes a ton of sense.
Yeah, I agree as well. And just one other thing, you mentioned the 24, everybody's feeling 24/7. Having worked remotely quite a bit in my career, I hope we can support and encourage the teachers to really try to, you know, maintain those boundaries for themselves. I think they need to hear that message from the administration and the school principals because it's, you know, nobody should be operating 24/7 right now. So I just, I hope we can continue to send that message.
Shannon, that's just, just so you know, we are sending that message as loud and clear as possible to our teachers because, you know, we're, and we're guilty of it, we're guilty of it too right now. And it is just quite frankly, just, it's not sustainable. So we're, we're strongly encouraging those boundaries and it's, it's a good problem to have that our teachers are so committed to doing this right. But we can't, can't keep this pace up. I agree with you. I appreciate you saying that.
I just wanted to mention too, we also have Passover coming up, so we wanted to respect families and staff members that will be observing that as well in the coming week.
This is Sheri Hissar. I, I just wanted to say as a parent, it was not even on my radar that we had Good Friday and April vacation coming up. I haven't even thought that far ahead. And I would just ask that you give parents a heads up that we are going to be taking a break because with no structure to the day at all, I agree with you that we should take a break, but that will mean absolutely no structure and no, no friends to take up all that time. It's going to be, we're going to have to come up with a plan on how to approach all that time off of school with nothing to do. So if you could just maybe make parent, I mean, I'm, I'm sure I'm not the only parent that's not thinking that far ahead, but I'll need to have a plan in place of what I'm going to keep them busy with all those days off. So that was a good heads up for me to think about.
Thank you. I think that's, I'm certainly guilty of not knowing what day it is most of the time right now. So, so yeah, we probably need to give people some warning about what's coming up so that they can make alternatives. Of course, you know, parents are free to structure their own days regardless of what the school is doing. And so, but I think I agree with Dr. Antonucci that there's a very compelling reason to give our staff a break.
Oh, I definitely, I definitely think that there needs to be a break.
Great. Thank you.
And I think teachers have been really good about putting up suggestions or websites or even on their regular teacher pages, they have links to math sites or games that you can play or enrichment activities or, so Julia, to your point, if the parents need some more structure, I think there's a lot on teacher pages in places that folks can find things. But John, I hadn't even thought about April vacation. And I completely agree with your philosophy.
Yeah, me too. So John, do you think that message will go out this week or?
I can, I can send it out tomorrow. Yeah, or Friday. We're in a time, we're in a time warp, however you said that. I mean, a lot of people, it's not on a lot of people's radar, but it is coming up.
Yeah.
If I could just, John's going to be sending out a message this week that also included a message from the Commissioner of Education. And on that commissioner's letter, the, the state has partnered with WGBH, which has been helpful in providing families with educational programming that's not just for the really little ones. It's for kids all the way up into high school as well as some projects and learn. So even that's a great link to, when we send that letter home to everyone, that's a great link to look at if you're looking for some structured activities over April vacation with your family. And even some television that you can know will be educational and time well spent.
And I was going to chime in. Some of the local communities are working on putting online various activities and lessons across the age range for the April vacation. So Museum of Science or Art Museum of Art, Fine Art should have by then some, some things that are accessible for.
That's great.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much. So then the next discussion item is, is the impact of school closure on our community education program. So again, Dr. Antonucci, do you want to take the lead on that?
Yeah, Julie, before I do though, I just want to, I want to be mindful of the time. If you recall, we, we have an executive session and our attorney is going to be joining.
Right, right. Okay.
5:30. I just texted her and I told her, you know, we're running behind, but at some point we might need to break and run our executive session and then come back to open, open session. I just want to kind of put that on our radar. Hopefully we can get through the discussion.
Okay. Okay. Well, do you want to say that we'll go for what, 10 minutes and then go into executive session?
I think, I think even, I think even 20 or 25 or something like that. So I'll, I'll try to text her. I'm going to turn it over to Katie in a minute, but I just wanted to.
Want to just say the top of the hour? You want to just say 6 o'clock?
It's up to you all. How about we do 6:10 to buy ourselves a little wiggle room?
Okay, that's fine. Sure. Thank you.
So we have, we have an extremely difficult situation that we're dealing with. And I know there are some people on the call that are, that are interested in this topic. And it's related to our community education program and community education is an umbrella. And our executive director, Sandy Coon, and I know Sandy's on the call. I see her. But that program, under the, under the community ed umbrella, we have our Magic Dragon program, which is our day, private daycare essentially. We have our extended day program where kids get before and after school purposes. We have our more traditional community ed program called Before and After Dark. And then we have Driver's Ed, which is kind of a small component of the program. The biggest two of those I mentioned are Magic Dragon and Extended Day. Katie's going to run through an analysis or an overview of the program. But what I want to say here is important and that the, the issue that we're dealing with right now is that those programs are tuition-based and they're self-operating. So they don't, they're not included in our operating budget. They're sort of a fee-for-service program. And it's incredibly well-run program. Sandy has done a remarkable job in her career. They are robust programs. They're popular. We are financially solvent, more than financially solvent every year. In fact, we expected this year to end with a positive balance, you know, in the neighborhood of, I believe, $50,000, $60,000. What's changed right now is that we're not in school and we're not providing the service. And as a result, we're not able to charge tuitions. And basically we're, we're running out of money. And we don't think that we can continue to keep our staff on board beyond this week. It's heartbreaking and an extremely difficult thing to even consider, and it's difficult to even talk about. But the order of magnitude of the problem is significant. It's several hundred thousand dollars. And there's quite frankly, we cannot see our way out of it without, without furloughing, effectively putting our staff, laying off our staff or furloughing our staff effective at the end of this week. So that's the issue we're wrestling with. I'm going to pause there for a moment and turn it over to Katie Blake, who's done a really good overview for us to show you, to show you what the issue is financially or kind of mathematically. So if that's okay, I'll transition to Katie. Katie, do you want me, can you, you present? You need me to present?
I'm not sure if I can present or if you have to do it.
Okay. So I am going to, I am going to share my screen with everybody on this call. So I think what will happen is that they'll be, you'll hear, we'll essentially be on an audio call. You'll hear Katie's voice and I'm going to, I'm going to try to manage her presentation from, from afar. Okay. So bear with us. I'm assuming you can all see that presentation?
Yep. I'll say.
Okay, Katie, go ahead. I, sorry, I took some of your first slide away, but go ahead.
No, that's totally fine. So as we go through and discuss, as John had said, under the community education umbrella, there's multiple programs. All the programs are self-sustaining programs, meaning that we are covering our expenses with any of the revenue that we're receiving during the school and the fiscal year. So when we refer to community education, we're speaking specifically about the Magic Dragon Program, Extended Day, Before and After Dark, and our Driver's Education Program. So the first program that I'll provide some details on is our Community Education Magic Dragon Program. So for Magic Dragon, for our student population, we have for this current school year, we have 115 children that are aged anywhere from eight weeks old to five years old, spread across seven classrooms. And the program includes students of 15 of our Duxbury Public School employees. And it also includes students of five of our Magic Dragon employees. So the staff for Magic Dragon is made up of 27 employees. And it includes one director, an assistant director, four mentor teachers, 12 teachers, eight teaching assistants, and one substitute that is effectively used as a floating teacher. So generally at the beginning of the school year, I'll sit down with the Community Education Executive Director and we'll go through all of the projected revenue that she expects to see come in throughout the school year. And then we always will look at our estimated monthly expenses. When we have that meeting, we always discuss the previous fiscal year. We look at how much revenue we brought in, what our carryover balance is, what the projections are for the current year, and then what she sees that's needed for any future fiscal years. And that's always just to maintain the financial solvency of the programs. So making sure that the revenue that we're bringing in certainly is covering any of the expenses that we foresee that we're going to have to spend out of these programs. So we've always carried over a balance from year to year. And so, and when we have these conversations, we always have the conversation with the expectation that we're going to be in school for the calendar year. So certainly we're not having these conversations ever anticipating that we would have to look at a portion of the school year and not have the ability. at a portion of the school year and not have the ability to bring in this revenue. So during these conversations, the projected monthly tuition for Magic Dragon for the 1920 school year, for, so we take the overall revenue and divide it by 10 months. And that's that 131,506. And then our estimated monthly expense for 1920, spread over the 10 months, is 122,864. So you can see that the, what we had projected was more than enough to cover our expenses. And that was, of course, during the course of a typical school year. And then just my note at the bottom is that our currently our outstanding salary expense for Magic Dragon for the remainder of the 2020 fiscal year is 291,421. So-
Katie, do you mind if I interrupt and ask a question?
No, go ahead.
Can you clarify, you know, you're using the expression "we." And I just want to understand, are the 27 employees, are they town of Duxbury employees? Are they school district employees? What's, is, what's the entity? Is it, is it run as a school department? Just clarify for, for me what, what, what the entity is that we're describing.
Sure, yep. So it's Duxbury Public School Employees, but the employees are funded through these revolving accounts. And so these programs are not included in the operating budget. So they are completely self-sustaining programs, but they are Duxbury Public School Employees.
Okay. And is there, is there, and again, I don't want to get overly technical and I want you to go through the presentation, but are there, are these employees as a result under, on some different form of contract than our normal staff that is subject to compensation based on town meeting, budget approval? Like maybe just clarify. And you can answer that question later, but that at least helps me to understand what, you know, they work for the district, but the funding is based on essentially annual, I forget the term that you just described. Basically the revenue has to cover these expenses.
Right, so they're, they're town employees, so they're Duxbury Public School Employees, but they are, they live under the umbrella of self-sustaining revolving funds. So the teachers, they do not, so when we refer to the teachers in these programs, not covered under the Duxbury Teachers Association. So they're under a separate contract. And similar to our teaching assistants, they're not covered under the instructional assistant contract. So they all receive separate contracts. So I'm not sure if that helps or-
Well, I guess what I'm trying to clarify, are they employees at will? If, or do we have a contractual obligation to meet these? And again, I don't want to dominate the conversation on what you put free here. I'm just trying to get my head around the, you know, what, what the circumstances.
Peter, they're, they're employees at will.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you. Yeah, keep going. Sorry about that, Katie, but that's helpful.
No, that's fine.
Just to frame my, my thinking around this at least, just to understand.
Yeah, absolutely. And so then the next program that I wanted to review was the Extended Day Program. So for Extended Day, we, for the student side, we have 150 or approximately 150 students enrolled. And these students range from kindergarten, grade five, enrolled in our Extended Day Program. And for our staff, we have 13 employees that consist of two directors, an assistant to the director, three mentor teachers, five teachers, two teaching assistants. And then we have multiple Duxbury Public School Employees that also fill hourly responsibilities or hourly roles in the Extended Day Program. And so very similar to Magic Dragon, we always, Sandy and I sit down and we always look at what our projected revenue will be for the fiscal and school year. And then similarly, we will look at the expense side too. And so the projected monthly tuition revenue and expense revenue that I listed, of course, these were the numbers that we reviewed before we knew that there would be any interruption in the school year. So our original snapshot for 1920 had our monthly tuition revenue at just over $56,000, 56,491. And then the estimated monthly expense to cover our salaries and some of our instructional materials was just under that $55,000. And just like Magic Dragon, I listed out what our outstanding salary expense is for this fiscal year. And that for Extended Day is $150,729. So on the next couple of slides, I tried to, John, if you can just go to the, and there we go. So for the next couple of slides, I tried to provide as much detail with how our financial position is. And this was all done as of yesterday's date, as of March 31st. So for Magic Dragon, just showing what the beginning balance was on the first day of the fiscal year as of July 1st. And then, so in this summary, I've included the revenue that we've received so far this fiscal year, any of the expenses that we've incurred so far, so that, of course, the expenses include salary, instructional materials, food, some professional development expenses for staff. Then we have a number of pending expenses. And so with that pending expenses, that might shift, that will shift downwards somewhat because with our pending expenses, we have those, and those are encumbrances. So those are commitments to, to spend. And of course, with school being closed, we may, may not see all of those expenses realized. So that number might trend down slightly, but I don't anticipate that it, it will change drastically. And then we also do have some pending deposits, which is revenue received for that, for the March period. So the available balance as of March 31st, 2020 is the $294,150 amount. And so I just listed out what some of our outstanding expenses are. And with the outstanding expenses, the problem that we're running in, as John alluded to, is that school's not in session, so our kids are not coming into these programs. So we're not, we don't have the ability to bring in that revenue to offset our expenses. So currently our outstanding salary expense, that's the $80,199. And that's for the payroll period that's coming up at the end of next week, which would be reflective of pay up until this, this Friday. And then we, we do have a portion of an outstanding benefit expense. So because these funds are evolving funds, that the revolving fund has to incur the expense of any health benefit. And we incur the town portion of the health benefit. So what we need to do is we have to pay, we, we being the community education programs essentially have to pay for the health insurance benefit, the town portion for the employees that elect to take that coverage. So that, I'm just including as our outstanding benefit expense.
Katie, can I, oh, I'm sorry, Katie?
Go ahead, yeah.
I don't mean to jump, I don't mean to jump on your talking points, but I just-
No, totally fine.
The, I want to clarify or just clarify two things. In our recommendation, okay, these numbers that you just said are through April, the April 3rd payroll. So that's outstanding. And what we're recommending in this analysis, to be clear, is continuing to pay the employees' health insurance, even if they're on furlough. And we thought, and we, we think we can afford that based on Katie's analysis, with some caveats, which she can explain, but I just want to make that point. I thought it was very important to try to do everything in our power to keep folks on the health insurance during this really brutal time. So I know it's, it's not a perfect scenario, but it's, we, we thought that this helped a bit. So I just want to, I want to, I wanted to make that point. I'm sorry, Katie, for jumping in.
No, that's totally fine, thank you. And so the last piece too is a tuition reimbursement. So what happens is in June, when the families are enrolling for the upcoming school year, they pay a deposit. And so that deposit is reflective of a payment for June of the future school year. So last June, we had a number of families that paid a deposit. And that would be reflective of a June tuition payment, so for this June. So in this scenario here, if we aren't back in school, there is, we do have a potential liability that we might, we may have to, if we're not, if, as I said, if we're not back in school, there is potential that we would have to reimburse the tuition payment that we've already received in, for this June. So that's the 125,401. So that's the Magic Dragon piece. And then the, the last piece that I have a summary for is just, it's very similar. It's for Extended Day. So of course we have our beginning balance for our Extended Day Program. And then I've listed out the revenue that we've received, any of the expenses that we've incurred, including salary, instructional materials, and some of the pending expenses that we have, which is any of the commitments that we currently have to pay for playground improvements, instructional materials, and any professional development that we may have had scheduled for the remainder of the year. And then we do have a, we do have a number of pending deposits. So that's the $25,000 amount. So they, that brings us to the available balance as of March 31st. And then we also do have our outstanding salary expense. So that's the payment of staff through April 3rd, 2020. And then similar to Magic Dragon, there is also a health insurance or a benefit expense. And that's the town's portion that is reflective of the entire fiscal year, similar to Magic Dragon. And that's the, it's close to $32,000 for this account. And then it's the same process for Extended Day for our families. So we do have, in order to secure a spot for the upcoming school year, they pay, there's a prepayment that they make in June for the, for the next school year. And that's reflective of a June tuition payment. So that is, there's potential that we would have to reimburse that to families if we weren't back in school in June.
Are there any questions on the slides? While they're up, otherwise I'll, I'll, I'll stop sharing my screen.
No, I guess the only variable would be the expenses that might go down because we're not in school, essentially.
Yeah, and I, and so I do think with those pending numbers, I think that the change would probably be somewhat minimal.
Right.
But they, they, they may be reduced. They certainly could be reduced and I would expect that they would be. But it's not going to, I don't imagine that either one would be reduced to zero.
Thanks, Katie.
Sure.
It's also, it's a good question, Kelly, and it's kind of a good reminder about the order of magnitude here. If you, if you go back and look at our outstanding salary expenses, you're looking at almost $300,000 for Magic Dragon alone and then another 150 for Extended Day. So we're knocking on half a million dollars of salary expenses. So even if some things go down slightly, that, that, the order of magnitude is such that we just don't think it's viable to continue. And that, that's what makes it so hard.
John, I have a question for you. Are you aware, because you know, we, we can't be unique here in running these sort of programs. Have you heard, like, to the CARES Act, I mean, there's 350 billion to try and not have small business let go employees because the impact is on the state unemployment systems? Is there anything in the CARE, this kind of payroll protection program that's available to nonprofits in the private sector? Because the impact is all these people, if they are let go, are going to collect state unemployment. So part of this CARES Act was to take that burden, you know, this $2 trillion. I don't know if that's something that you could ask around and find out if there's anything that can protect these employees so they don't fall right into the unemployment system.
I can certainly look into that, Peter. Nothing I've seen to date indicates that we'd be eligible for that. Remember, it's, we're, we're a public school, so it would have to come, I think, in the form of public assistance. But I will, I will certainly check again, Katie, unless you have different information.
You know, it's, it's a protection to payrolls. And I know this act covers, you know, business and nonprofits. I don't know if there was anything, because you know, this could be hundreds of thousands of people across the country that are employed by these sort of programs by school districts that could lose their jobs. So I didn't, I didn't, something to at least inquire about. Is there any support from this federal $2 trillion, you know, program?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I, before we move on to any other comments, we're running up against 6:10. If, if the attorney is okay, do you want to kick it to 6:30 just so we can finish this conversation?
Yeah, that would be good.
Let me just see if she can, if she can.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
I'll see her right now.
Am I right in thinking these, these two revolving funds are ring-fenced? So we can't, we can only spend the fund, the revenue for the fund for the expenses associated with the activity, yes?
Correct.
So am I being thick? Or is it really the, it's the $71,000 deficit in Magic Dragon? That's the biggest issue?
No, Julia, it's, it's not. So that $71,000 is assuming that we stop payroll as of April 3rd. So-
Ah, okay, okay, right.
What, the, the real issue, it's, it's more like 500,000, 450,000.
Right, it's the 291,000, right?
Plus one, plus one, plus 150. So I'm pointing to something that's not there, but plus 150.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments from school committee members?
I just want to, I just want to say, and I hope you can appreciate that we have looked at this every possible way. And we, we understand the impact to families and our employees. It's devastating. I mean, there's no other way, there's no other way to say it and there's no other- It's devastating. I mean, there's no other way, there's no other way to say it, and there's no other way to look at it. Our ability to pay for the health insurance, I think, is a small relief. I mean, it doesn't nearly fill the hole that we're causing with a potential long-term closure. But I just, we're taking this, I just hope you know, we're looking at this as seriously and with the seriousness it requires, it's, it's just a horrible, it's a horrible conversation to even entertain. And these are people who have given, in many cases, their careers to the Duxbury Public Schools. And, you know, it's heartbreaking, but we literally can't see a way out of it. And we pray that it's temporary, but at this point, that's our recommendation.
And I, if I can just include too, we're looking at this in a way that we want the programs to be able to continue. And so we're thinking that we don't want to dig ourselves in that big of a hole that the programs won't have the ability to continue. So we're hoping that it's just, when we talk about a furlough, making it a temporary, temporary work stop so that they'll be able to come back next year and we'll be able to have the the programs running next year and hopefully be stronger than ever. And so that's why we're trying to take that action now. So that we have, you know, so that all the teachers and the families have programs to come back to next year.
And is it, am I right in thinking that if school starts up again this year, then these programs will start up again?
Absolutely.
That's the plan.
Okay, because because there are 20 odd children belonging to families of employees elsewhere in the school system, right? So
Correct.
Yeah, I would just, I, you know, a couple of comments. I mean, Katie, with the pain on your expression, and John, the way you've communicated about the impact and the importance of these programming, I think you've made it really clear that you're committed to doing everything that we possibly can. And and I think the school committee certainly stands behind you on that. I think, I think we have some limitations, as you said. I mean, we can't spend funds that we don't have without approval from town meeting. So if we can't, we can't jeopardize jeopardize our ability to operate with the funds which the town have approved to us. So I think you're articulating how valuable we believe these programs are for our community. And you're trying to commit to doing everything that you possibly can without spending money that we actually can't legally spend, right? Is that a fair way to summarize it?
I would say so. John, do you agree?
I agree.
So just, I think you've got our support to do whatever you can to support the the people that have made these programs possible. And and, you know, it's, it's just, it's, it is what it is. It's a horrible situation. And and maybe there'll be some support at some point for these people that are so critical to our whole public education system. But that just doesn't look like the circumstances we're in right now, so.
Well, I appreciate that. And let's hope it doesn't last. That's all we can hope for.
Yes, exactly. Any other comments or discussion on this topic? Okay. John, do you want to go through the action items and try and do that by 6:30?
Sure, I think we can do it. It's pretty, pretty cut and dry.
Okay. Great, so, okay.
No, go ahead. Sorry.
Sorry. So the first action item is our vote to exempt Duxbury Public Schools from school choice. I think we had briefly discussed this at our last meeting. So if, if, does anybody feel the need to discuss it again? Or are we ready to vote?
I don't need to discuss it, but I just, one technical thing. I think I might have seen something that we have to do roll call vote when we're doing remote meetings.
Yeah.
You do. I think you have to do a roll call vote for school choice specifically, but yeah.
Okay.
So could I have a motion then to exempt Duxbury Public Schools from school choice?
So moved.
Second.
So let's ask for roll call votes. So Peter?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay, thank you. Then the second action item, there are two policies that are, this is effectively our second reading. So we've, we've had the policy, revised policies at our last meeting. And so we just want to vote in favor of the revisions or vote on the revisions. So so the first, it's actually three items. The first is a revision to policy DJE, which is related to bidding requirements. So I have a motion in favor of the proposed revisions to policy DJE relating to bidding requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Great. So all in favor? So Pete, Peter? Kelly? Shannon? Matt? And then Julia? Yes. Okay. Right. The second policy was related to the Special Education Reserve Fund policy. And so could I have a motion to accept the revisions to the Special Education Reserve Fund policy, please?
So moved.
Second.
Great. So a roll call vote then. Peter?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Shannon?
Hi.
Matt?
Yes.
Julia? Yes. Okay. And then the last one is a proposed change to the mileage reimbursement rate. As you may remember, Mrs. Blake wants to align it with the, is it the internal revenue rate? Which, so could we have a motion to approve the change to the mileage reimbursement rate, please?
So moved.
A second.
Great. So roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Shannon?
Hi.
Matt?
Yes.
Julia? Yes. Okay.
I, just as in a quick aside, I floated this idea for reimbursement to parents for teenage drivers in my family and a little bit older. Didn't go over so well. 50 cents a mile or whatever it is.
59 cents, yeah.
No way. Well, that's how much it costs. It's like cell phones. They're not free. They just don't get to you.
Right, exactly. Not popular. Okay, so then the food service contract. Katie, do you want to remind us what we're?
Yeah, sure. So I had mentioned it previously in some of the, some of the meetings that we had earlier in the year. This is the year that our existing contract with our food service provider, which is Compass Group, is the parent group. I'm sorry, it's the parent company of Chartwells. So in February, we initiated the request for proposal process to onboard the new contract for upcoming fiscal years. So we had several proposals that had initially expressed interest in partnering with the school. And these companies joined us for a walkthrough of our facilities in February. And we were engaged in a series of questions. However, we only received one proposal on our March 23rd due date, and that was from Compass Group, which is the parent company of Chartwells. So this is the company that I'm recommending that we offer our contract to for the period of fiscal year '21 and through fiscal year '23. And we've been really fortunate to have a great partnership with Chartwells here in Duxbury for the past several years. And I'm certain that they will continue to provide us with the same high-quality service that they have in the past. So strong recommendation that we approve the the contract for Compass Group for the upcoming fiscal years.
Thank you for that. Any questions or concerns from school committee members on this topic? No. Okay, if we're ready to go ahead and vote, could I have a motion then to award the food service contract for fiscal '21 to '23 to the Compass Group?
So moved.
Second.
Great. All in favor are, yes, so roll call. Let's start with Matt?
Yes.
Shannon? Kelly?
Yes.
Peter? Julia? Yes. Okay, great. And then our last item is to vote on the continuing status of the community education programs, Magic Dragon and Extended Day. Are we, those are the two we've discussed. Are we including Before and After Dark and Driver's Ed, or is that? John?
You're muted, John.
All right, Katie, yes, all programs officially under the recommendation.
Okay, okay.
And Julie, can I just, can I just say, the reason it's, I don't know if it requires it, but we did get, legal counsel did suggest that we did take, do take a vote on it because it has, it's budget, it has budgetary impact.
Right.
Since one of the charges of the school committee is budget, we felt it was appropriate just to take a formal position on it.
Okay, and and we're voting to close, what are, are we voting? Because it says on the agenda, it's voting on the continuing status. What are we vote, we're voting to close the programs?
I just think, I think maybe, and I haven't, I should have thought this through more, but I think maybe just vote, vote on, vote on the recommended, vote on our recommendation to close the program and on, and for, and furlough the employees based on the analysis that Katie, something like that.
Okay, okay. So may I have a motion then, please, to accept the recommendation of Dr. Antonucci and Mrs. Blake regarding the furlough of our community education programs?
So moved.
Second.
Great. So roll call vote. Shannon?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Matt?
Yes.
Peter?
Hi.
Julia? Yes. Okay.
And also too, you know, really our appreciation and support for all the staff that have made that program such a great success over the years.
Yes, thank you for that. Exactly. And our regrets at having to take this step. Okay, so now, could I have a motion to adjourn into executive session, please? Because we're going, we would like to go into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining with the Duxbury Teachers Association, Unit A teachers, and Unit C instructional assistants, which and, which would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governing body if the discussions were in open session. And then we will not return to open session afterwards. This would be the the end of our meeting, our public meeting, rather. So could I have a motion to adjourn into executive session, please?
I move that we adjourn to executive session for the remainder of our meeting tonight, April 1st.
Second.
Great. And this, we do need a roll call vote. So Peter?
Hi.
Matt?
Yes.
Kelly?
Hi.
Shannon?
Hi.
Julia? Yes. Okay, great. So we will adjourn into executive session. Thank you, everybody who's been attending remotely. And we will meet with you next month or next time.
Committee, sit tight. I'm going to try to, people, people will get off the call, but I'm going to try to put us into what's called the breakout room on Zoom. So I'm going to try to do that right now.
Am I all set, John?
You are, Suzanne. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Can I?
Thanks, Suzanne.
No problem.
I'm realizing I don't know how to do this.
I can set up a, I can set up a quick meeting for us unless it, unless that's going to
No, I can, I can, I can do this. One second here.
Hi, everybody.
Welcome, Michelle. Thank you for joining us.
No worries.
Okay, I think we're I think we're good. We have five, one, two, three, four, five. Yeah. Hi, Michelle. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Sorry to keep you on hold like that.
No, quite all right.
John, are we recording?
We are recording.
Should it be for executive session?
Oh, right.
No, no.
And we just, I would just give people a heads up because, or just give you guys a heads up that the links still, unless we're in a breakout room, the link still works so people can get back in. So if that were to happen, just, you know, just so you know, just to be
Yeah, they're going to go, they go into a waiting room and I'll, I'll make sure I
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.